Good evening and welcome everybody to the October 18th Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, again, we are at the Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting for October 18th. First item on the agenda, has the board had a chance to accept the, um, accept, review the minutes from 10-4?
Yes.
Okay, I'll offer a motion to accept those minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, pick one. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Okay. First item on the agenda, Timber Trail ARB Public Hearing for amended subdivision ARB in Ridge Preservation of Proposed Single Family Dwellings Located Within a Previously Approved Subdivision on Holly Court and Highland Mills Set Properties Known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Section 237, Block 2, Lot 5 through 11. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Locke. I'm an engineer and land surveyor employed by AFR Engineering and Land Surveying.
So if you could just give us a quick 500th review overview of the project, we'll go through the consultant's memos and then we'll open up the public hearing.
Certainly. The project is an existing eight lot subdivision. It is mostly constructed up through its infrastructure. It currently only has one home constructed on it. The applicant has come back before the board primarily to make changes in the architectural appearance of the remaining seven proposed homes and also the related site issues for putting different houses on than were initially anticipated. We have had some reviews that we've been responding to. We do have the most recent review of October 12th from H2M. We'll be happy to address the issues either point by point as you would prefer or simply responding to your consultant.
You don't have to go through the issues point by point. Typically, when the issues require actions, it will just be part of another submission unless there's clarification that you need on one of them. Natalie?
Sure. I just wanted to kind of remind the board that although this started out as an ARB application, it now includes an amended subdivision, basically to remove a note on the filed plat which prohibits deviations in the building envelope of more than 10 feet. And really that's required now because the homes are larger and a different config, in a different configuration. Our memo notes that there are certain forms that should be submitted along with the amended subdivision application, and I'll defer to Kelly and the requirements of the Building Department on that. We did have a comment on the snow removal easement that's shown on the plat that should be revised to match the filed document in the clerk's office. We also discussed in our memo the purpose of the green belt buffer that was approved as part of the original subdivision plat, and essentially that was there to preserve the natural vegetation and the existing trees in that 50-foot area surrounding the subdivision. It essentially prohibits structures from being built in that area unless approved by the planning board. So our memo notes that Lot 5 portion of the home extends into that area. It looks like it could be shifted away from the green belt buffer to avoid that disturbance. Also with Lot 5, there is some grading and a retaining wall proposed on that light, on that lot in the green belt buffer. And again, based on the filed documents, it appears that the planning board has the authority to approve the grading and the construction of the retaining walls. The applicant is now showing a hedgerow to sort of offset some of the removal in that area, but ultimately that's a discussion and consideration of the planning board for you to mull over. Also on Lot 1, it was brought up that the clearing of the site as it is now extends outside of the limits of disturbance that were previously approved. So the applicant is proposing a hedgerow to offset some of that tree removal. Again, we recommend the board consider whether or not that's to your satisfaction. We have a new comment requesting that all of the plot plans that were submitted be revised to show the approved limits of disturbance so that you can see if the new homes then further extend into those previously approved limits. With respect to the ARB review, almost all of our comments are repeated from prior memorandum. It appears that based on the applicant's proposal, four-bedroom homes are proposed, four-bedrooms home, four-bedroom homes were previously approved. And at this time, the plans comply with the building inspector's determination that there are no closets for those rooms, and essentially they're not bedrooms, like those spaces that were unfinished, unfinished bonus room and music room and things like that. So it doesn't appear that there's any impacts under the moratorium. And then otherwise, we just wanted to note that the public hearing is continued from the August 16th meeting and seeker remains to be concluded for which we defer to Kelly.
Thank you. Questions for Natalie? Kelly?
Sure. Just a couple of things. Natalie said that seeker remains to be concluded. Previously on this application, it was a type 2 action, but because this amends the subdivision plat now, it becomes an unlisted action. So in terms of this evening, the board can declare its intent to serve lead agency and type the action as unlisted. However, I can't do the mailings until the EAF is received. And you also can't close the public hearing until seeker's concluded. So that's, they do need to submit the proper application forms and EAF for the amended subdivision. I had a couple of comments that I thought should be notes on the plans or a correction to a note on the plan, which I can let Mr. Locke know as well, but general note 6 has a typo. And then in order to use just these sheets to modify the originally filed plat, there should be a note on this plat stating that it only amends sheets X, Y, and Z, whatever it is, and that those other plans, you know, remain in full force and effect except to the extent that's altered. And also, so this application was previously referred to the county and it came back with a local determination, but again, since it's amended subdivision, once those documents come in, the Building Department will be asked to re-refer that so that the amended subdivision is included.
Thank you, Kelly. Questions for Kelly? All right, so before we open the public hearing, as you heard Natalie speak, there are two lots that they have retain, clearing is going to take place in the green belt buffer. I don't know if anybody's taken a ride down there and looked yet. See, there was already been some clearing. There was a little additional clearing that shouldn't have been done. There's some back and forth on that. It was done, they're saying for infrastructure work. It was best way to get the machines. I think probably it's better before this board makes a determination if we want to allow additional clearing and green belt buffer space that this board takes a ride down and looks at the two lots proposed and see if you guys, this board will be, a hedgerow would be acceptable to the trees that would be removed.
That's a good idea.
And being we're going to have to continue the public hearing because the application needs additional, there's no rush to take action on tonight, but I do ask the board to go take a look and then come back with your thoughts at the next hearing on that. Keep in mind, there's going to be, it's not just going to be the retaining wall that gets cleared, it's going to be whatever it needs to do the actual construction of the retaining wall as well. It's listed on the plans, so just, the lots are all marked there so you can tell which lot is which. Lot of the lots still actually have the outlines of where the houses are going to be, just keep in mind, these houses are going to be bigger. So just, I ask the board to go take a look at that. Any other, is there any other questions or concerns before I open the public hearing? Okay, just as our customary, I just ask you guys to sit down while we poll the public. So at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing for the Timber Trail ARB. At this point in time, we've received no written comments from the Building Department. So anybody in the building want to speak on Timber Trail subdivision? Second call for Timber Trail subdivision. Third and final call for the public hearing on the Timber Trail subdivision. Note that no one has risen to speak. I will offer a motion to extend the public hearing to November 15th to give the applicant time to respond to H2M's notes and submit the EAF.
Please.
Well, did I get dates wrong?
No, yeah, yes, sorry. So there's no action that this board can take until seeker's actually completed, and I can't send the notices until the EAF is submitted. So the earliest that the board would be able to, you know, close the public hearing and take action, or just close the public hearing would be December 6th.
I was just extending the public hearing, but...
Oh, okay. Well, I was going to say extend it to either December 6th or the December 20th. Because I have to do notices to declare the board's intent to serve as lead agency because now that there's a subdivision, it's unlisted instead of type 2. And there wasn't an EAF that was submitted, so I still need to get that and then do the mailing.
Right, so we needed the, the, once we, just because they, once we declare our intent to be lead agency, it has to get circulated and we have to give proper time for people to challenge if they want us to serve as lead agency, but it's 30...
30 days.
30 days, right?
So I just didn't want them to like come back and waste any time if the board couldn't...
No, makes sense. I forgot about that little part.
It's cool, that's what I'm here for.
Which day works better for you?
Seven, again, obviously we'd like, we did not, that we totally come in just for revision of the ARB of the house itself, like that's...
Right, but because you're...
Obviously we would try to, because we're already a couple of months, not more than a couple of months in, basically looking back at it, we just look at, we just advise the house to do everything. Again, I understand it's a process, but kind of what we're doing is basically, is changing the house. So obviously we try to get it as fast as possible, we're ready for so long, which I look at as, as not a big, a huge subdivision or whatever, we just change the house. So obviously we try to get it as, as responsible, so the 76 connection, we're obviously moving to 76.
Right, but you mean...
That's already another 45 days.
I understand that, Larry, but you came to the, you and your applicant came to the board, there was already a restriction that these houses couldn't be any, made any bigger than what they were. The planning board prior to this board, I don't think, except for you, probably weren't on this board, reviewed and reviewed the environmental impacts considering that these houses would be a specific size, plus or minus the additional enlargements. The houses that you've proposed are almost 120% in the largest, larger than the houses that are there now. So it's, it is a big deal, and that's why the EAF has to be re-submitted and we have to retype it on the secret. I mean, if you want to keep it the way it is, then...
I understand that, again, I understand it's a process, I understand obviously it wasn't as possible. And John said that you wouldn't be able to move Lot Number 5, shouldn't be able to, that's the least of, basically there is paperwork that has to go in so that these buildings can circulate.
Yeah, just your microphone.
Besides that, they're not, I'm just, I'm just going to, that we move Lot 5.
Yes, Lot 5 is relatively minor issue. We can move the house on there. I hadn't realized the roof overhang was impacting in the one buffer.
What about Lot 8?
Hmm?
Lot 8, there's two lots, 5 and 8, right?
No.
One and 5.
One and 5, sorry.
And one is more about just the extension of the clearing within that green belt.
Right. The issues they have are relatively minor, but there is a process and there were things such as an application that had to be filed and a seeker application, I'm sorry, seeker form has to be put in. They need to have that to circulate it because there's other agencies that have the right to comment on this. That's what controls the timeframe. So I...
There's nothing, that's a state thing, there's nothing...
No, I understand.
There's nothing we can do about that.
I read the review and I said, okay, the applicant didn't file what they should have.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, if they didn't, if they don't want to increase the size of the homes and...
No, I understand.
But I'm just for Larry's indication, if he didn't want to increase the size of the homes and stay with the original plans, then we could just go back to where we are.
I understand it and I appreciate your time.
All right. So December 6th, you said, is good? You guys can get everything? All right, so I'll offer a motion to extend the public hearing to 12-6.
Second.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry about that.
Briefly, I have a pretty good understanding regarding the site issues and what I have to do to address those. I'm not sure this gentleman has any discussion he wants to have regarding the architectural issue. Is there anything that you have?
We all, it says a couple of months ago, we got an architecture...
Yeah, we had moved through the ARB, but then once we went through the ARB, that's when it triggered everything else.
And there's five weeks in November, that's why it sounds like it's even...
Yeah, I forget, there's that half a week at the end of the month.
Hey, that gives me a fifth week and I might have a night off.
But just, Larry, we'll go with holidays, there's nothing around that time, right? Just making sure, I don't have the other...
Make sure.
Okay.
I have Hanukkah starting on the 8th.
Okay.
But I don't know anything more than what my calendar says.
All right. Nope, I forgot one thing. I will offer a motion to type this as a type 2, I'm sorry, as an unlisted action on the secret.
And declare your intent to serve as lead agency.
And this, and our, and our intent to declare lead agi, it's like the first night I've done this.
Start again.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor? I've been sitting here doing this for five years. All right.
If I may, if you want to be on the site or with the plantings or anything, I'd be happy to, just feel free to contact me, best ways to my email, which is...
Okay, well, I'll poll the board and make sure that, you know, there's no questions and that we need to...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. Woodbury Design Center, public hearing for amended site plan special permit and ARB for proposed conversion of four existing retail spaces into multiple boutique stores and access from one main entry. Said property is located 31 through 37 Center Drive in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps Section 25 dash dot, um, 1 dot 12. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jason Anderson, EDG Architects. I'm here with Dennis Lynch from MJ Engineering as well as the applicant Mel Fierer. So we're, would you like me to give a brief overview and then...
Yep.
Okay, so essentially we're taking four stores that are existing, which everybody knows as Staples, all the way through...
Forever 21.
Forever 21, basically that block of stores there, and trying to turn them into smaller boutiques, stores, so basically the same entrances, but we would have circulation path within the inside of the building. And so essentially it's the same retail uses that are there, just smaller stores and not the big boxes that are facing towards the parking lot. So that's the real brief overview. A few things since last time that I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention. What I'm shot up right now is the front facade, and so these are the signs that are in question, that there was a discussion, and I believe there was some back and forth, I believe with the Building Department regarding those signs. So those are the two that we're talking about. Basically, we're looking to keep the front facade as it is, with the exception that we're changing the signage, getting rid of Staples, Forever 21. As well as on Staples side, you'll notice, which is the far side on the top picture, that there has the red Staples background, and what we were looking to do is adjust that background to match the one on the right. And that's essentially the change there. The other item that I briefly wanted to show was a question or a discussion point last time, which was what's going to, what's it going to look like on the inside? So we developed renderings and submitted those as well. So you can sort of see the bottom image there, that is the view as if you just walked in. Right, so you walk in, that's the hallway, you can see the boutique stores lining each, they've got their own interior signage there. And then essentially that wraps around in a horseshoe, and you have that on the other side as well. And then at the top, to give a little bit more explanation of the design center there, right, so the design centerpiece is essentially a spot where those that are shopping can sit down. This is, all the stores there are meant to be part of, let's say, what you would put in your house, so you're able to get lighting, let's say appliances or window coverings. Well, there you can sit, discuss it, and...
So that's a communal space for everybody?
It's a communal space, yep. So everything is locked. That communal space though is just open and available. And it's right next to the bathroom, so it sort of makes sense within the space. And that's the full summary there.
That's nice. I like the inside, it looks...
Yeah, it's meant to, you know, we can't do much with the outside, but the inside is meant to be a bit more contemporary with what...
I was thinking like, almost like an in more, indoor like mall, like it was just going to be those... But that's...
Oh, yeah, no, so what we're really trying to do is that make a continuity of space, make it very transparent, and so you'll be able to see into each, but then, you know, have it really a bit more upscale. And that's really where the warmer materials, the wood that you see and tile and even the wood, we're going to leave the, above the hallways there, that, we're going to paint the ceiling black that's there, the exposed, because it's all exposed if you go and look at it. But then we'll drop simulated wood trellis essentially that goes down and drop the lights within it. And that's...
Looks nice.
That's the approach.
Questions for the applicant?
Even though it's all consistent, they're not going to be, it's going to have its own unique identity?
Well, they will, but they're, they're going to be forced to use the same signage that we've got going down within that space.
So behind the doors, they'll do whatever they want, but like the hallway look, it will be consistent?
Exactly.
Is there any expectation of putting any kind of plants inside?
So there are, so you can sort of see what we did here. Yeah, and to be honest, I, we are showing a little bit down below, plantings and such there. I mean, it's still going to be, we don't have skylights or anything where we're going to get natural light, so it's, you know, I would even envision, you know, a bench or something, you know, having that set up. It's very wide, so the hallways are, I think the most, the narrowest is 12 feet and the widest is 16 feet, right, so you're looking...
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a wide, open lane.
Cool.
Is there anything for shopping carts or there will not be?
No shopping carts. Nope.
Yeah, I think you, when you were, there's no material going to be actually, just samples and then...
That's exactly it. And then it gets delivered, you know, if you're buying an appliance, that'll be...
You want to try to shove a washing machine in a little...
Yeah, well, that's...
Get it out the front door?
Exactly.
It's always a good time. Any other questions from the board? Natalie?
Sure. As the board knows, this application is listed for public hearing tonight. Many of our technical comments from prior reviews are resolved, and where information from the applicant or responses lent themselves to potential considerations for conditions of the special permit, we've noted them in our memo. With respect to the water and sewer, just kind of want to close the loop on one thing. The site is served by the Village of Harriman for Water and sewer is by Orange County Sewer District. The district has previously confirmed there is an agreement in place for this site, and they've confirmed that there is available capacity for sewer treatment for what was approved way back when, at that time. There is available capacity now, especially since there is, it's basically a retail-to-retail swap. So typically you would have a condition of your action that would require the applicant secure a will-serv letter from Harriman and Orange County Sewer District. In this case, we think the will-serv letter should not be required from Orange County Sewer District, but Village of Harriman has always been very responsive to this site and provided those letters, so I think that that could be a condition of your potential action. Our only remaining comments on the application have to do with ARB and signage, and Mr. Anderson kind of raised them already. So the ARB form that was submitted was blank. It should reflect the changes to the facades that are proposed, especially where things like Staples has the red background, you know, just for completeness, right? And then as far as signage goes, typically for this zone, it's, you're permitted, or the applicant would be permitted, one, one wall sign per use and two is proposed. This was referred to Mike for an opinion, and that opinion essentially indicates that if the applicant can separate the application into two uses and each sign was modified to indicate north or south, then it could be complying. So our memo just notes some considerations for the board on, you know, how the two uses could be separate if they're connected via interior hallway, operated under common ownership, and also with the same type of services offered. So I know Kelly has some points to weigh in on, on that issue, but that should be properly memorialized in your resolution, you know, if the applicant isn't required to secure a variance. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions for Natalie? I think it's fairly straightforward, other than the sign issue.
Yeah, that was my only issue. I need to have some further conversations with Mike. I think Natalie and I had talked about how to separate this into two uses and really just to see if even it's like a doorway or a hallway, how it's going to be done. But if it is going to be done that way, we can obviously set up the resolution appropriately, but we need to make sure that it can be basically designated as two separate uses that are the same thing.
So like in the back of the house, they would have to put a doorway or...
Well, from what I understood, it's kind of like a little...
It's a horseshoe, supposedly.
Yeah, so maybe, I mean, these, the ones that are in the middle are likely just going to be on each side, and then, I don't know, maybe have a, or even a place for a doorway, but the doors are, oh, I don't know how it would be acceptable to Mike, but I think that it's doable, it's just how to get there. And I haven't quite figured all of that out yet.
Any thoughts on that?
I do, yes. So this doesn't require it by code for having a fire door or something like that, but generally in a school, in a hallway, you'd have a fire door that's held open with magnetic locks, right, and then fire alarm goes off, they shut. There is a tighter spot at the back of the, the space that's near where the bathrooms are and such, and we could put something that has the potential to close, could be left open though, held open in a position and be able to handle that. And that, in that way, it would separate the two. We have to make it though that it can stay open because that's part of our egress, right, so we have to be able to make that work. When it comes to the separated uses being similar, I would say that's really the same all the way down throughout all the facilities, they're all retail spaces, and so they are similar. So I don't think that probably is the issue. And we can also adjust the signage. We were thinking any way of putting at each entrance, you know, something that designates north or south, just because we thought, hey, if, if I'm one of the stores in the back on the right-hand side, I'd want to say, please come in the south entrance to be able to get there. So that would make sense as well. So if we could designate them separately, add that door, basically it'd be in this location right here.
Right.
Near the bathrooms, then that would work for us.
Would the board be able to let the applicant, Natalie and Kelly work the issue out with the building inspector?
Yes.
Yeah, I started bringing them back because I think, you know, we're going to, I don't want to hold it up on SOTACO. Such a small little detail. Any other questions for the applicant before we go to the public? I know, I just got to ask you to sit.
We're good.
No, just, just in case, you never know, someone may want to get up, you never, you never know. All right, so going to open the public hearing for Woodbury Design Center. Second call for the public hearing for Woodbury Design Center. Third and final call for the public hearing for the Woodbury Design Center. The planning board has received no written comment on this project and nobody has risen to speak on this project. I'm going to offer a motion to close the public hearing on Woodbury Design Center.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to recommend that we, I'll make a motion that we draft, have council draft a resolution of approval with the condition, picking up all the conditions in Natalie's memo, and that they allow them to work, like I said, stated before, with the building inspector and the applicant, and then when they work that issue out, let us know and then...
Yeah, so I was actually, I was going to ask you this after, but now that you've brought it up, I just want to make sure that if that is acceptable to the building inspector and having that separation and these two north and south signs, is that acceptable to the board for when I draft the resolution?
I'm, either way, if they have to put a north or south underneath or, I mean, I would prefer to see them if they can do it in interior so the signs are the same, but if the building inspector says in order to make this work, they have to put like a north or a south.
I think the north and the south would make more sense for customers. They know which door to go.
No, no, I can see it both ways. To me, it's just more wording on the outside of the building, so...
One thing we thought could be, be something is even if it's just on the glass, right, so up above it could be the same, but then down below on the glass, and that could be something that...
So would that be preferred if the building inspector says they can put north and south in glass and it complies with the code, that's what the board would like to see?
Yes.
Otherwise, the internal door.
Correct.
Okay.
We will work it out with the building inspector.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that includes the fire building code of the A D A?
Yeah, the Michael, Building Department, sorry. We'll do that review and make sure it's code compliant. All right, so I did offer a motion to have council draft a resolution approval with Natalie's recommended conditions.
Second.
Second, any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kelly, it says we're still waiting under 239?
Yes.
Natalie, can you?
I think I followed up on this. Let me see if I got a response.
We'll just follow up with Maria and make sure it went out, please. Because we can't do anything until the 239 comes back. Sorry, that's a county thing, that's not us.
You know what, it went out on September 7th, and I followed up to see if.
We're good.
Yeah, we're past.
We're 30 days, we're 30 days past.
We're good, we did get a response.
I didn't get it.
I, I had in my thing that we didn't either.
I'm gonna probably say local determination is what they?
Local determination, one advisory comment, and it says, "We appreciate the reuse of existing big-box stores for smaller boutique real retail stores, as this will help ensure that the currently vacant commercial space will continue to be maintained and utilized."
So the county liked it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so work out that one little thing with consultants in the Building Department, and then we'll have you back when I hear from council that you guys are all squared away.
Perfect, thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's help.
Next item on the agenda, Woodbury Villa's guardhouse. Review documents submitted for the removal of previously approved gatehouse with the addition of virtual guard systems and entrances on Central Valley Lane and Station Fenway, Fairway, sorry. Said properties known at the Village of Woodbury's tax map, section 254, block 1, lot 25.22, and section 255, block 1, lot 97. Good evening.
Good evening, James Martinez with Engineering and Surveying Properties. It's a relatively smaller application and not much engineering-wise, but to give a background on it, it's part of the, yeah, the Woodbury Villa's subdivision and development. The two accesses, one on Nininger Road and the other one on Dunderberg. We're proposing to have virtual guard booth and security booths and gatekeeping at both entrances. And the removal, the demolition and restoration of the one that was already built on Dunderberg. So from a technical standpoint, they will be manned 24/7 by a virtual gatekeeper. They will have keypad access, license plate readers, siren-activated gates for emergency responders, and they will have, like I mentioned, 24/7 access to someone. So if you have guests or visitors or anyone, they can buzz in and somebody will answer them, give them directions. I know the CEO of ISSM Protective Services, Simon Schenker, was planning on being here. I think he got delayed by a flight, but any technical questions or more so how the security system functions, I can take a note of it. We can provide you with a written narrative before the, for our next submission. I know that was one of the things that was requested. And we would like to set a public hearing for the next available date, if possible.
So my question is, do they, if you have a power failure, are they, do they, there's no, there's no generator on your plans? So is there a battery in them, or do they fail open?
That is a question I do not have the answer to you right now. I can get that, and that can be part of our narrative of.
It's gonna be one of the questions ESOs ask. I mean, it's only a piece of wood, really not that hard to get around, but rather not damage it if we don't have to.
Yeah, I understand.
Anybody else have a question?
Yeah, we have something similar, you know, concerning FedEx, UPS. How do they gain access, they have to call it, or do they give it?
That is also something I could get the answer to. The, I mean, the call box has somebody on the other end that can verify with cameras and everything, that can remotely open the gate and verify that somebody from UPS or Amazon or whoever is entering the subdivision.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking, most of the time, they're not going.
So you're looking for, to see if the homeowner would have to expect or allow somebody?
Do they have a general access code, FedEx, UPS?
That I don't have the answer to, but I could, I could get that for you.
I know Amazon now, when you, if you, you can actually put the key code. When you tell it to deliver it, you put the key code in, so they can get in. Any other questions before? You looked like you were gonna say something.
Yeah, sometimes we have to go in there. If there's a ARB modification of one of the owners in there, we'll, we'll go in and pay a site visit. We just tell people, we're on the planning board, we can get in? Or is there some other provision for that?
I would think that calling in, using the call box, and I guess explaining to the person on the other end, but that's also another technical question I could get the answer for and provide it in our written response.
So just for your information, it's probably what this board is gonna wanna see. As far as ESOs go, other radio-controlled gates in the community, they are required to provide remotes to police, the ambulance, and fire. So they don't have to call. They just either have a card to swipe or an actual clicker in their vehicle. So I'm pretty sure this board will probably wanna do the same thing, just because that's what's done here already.
Okay.
There's already a precedent set, so just, and then, yeah, with members of the planning board, we'll just, we'll have to, we'll have to work that out, but it'll be a condition that we put in the resolution of how members of this, because these boards' positions cycle out, so we'll have to work that out. But we'll make sure we can still get in. All right, any other questions, concerns?
I just have one, a major revenue. You know, in our A D A situation, it's four, uh, three components, the camera, the software, the hardware, and internet, and of course, power. And like Chris said, if there's no generator, are, we go up the gates automatically, go up?
I don't have.
But what I'm saying, on the internet, we experience the, the internet without the cameras. So we gotta do the same, right? Because obviously, the person who's wanting to see the person, or they take a picture, or?
Yeah, so you're saying that the gate still has the functionability of raising and lowering, but nobody to monitor?
It's dependent on the internet, and the internet goes out, and what happens?
Okay, yeah, I can, I'll get the answer to that, too.
Maybe it would probably be best, like, when we do schedule the public hearing, if you could just have a representative from?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that somebody's here, yeah.
Just to save time, because if, I just don't want, if like more questions come up when you come back?
Yeah.
And then you've gotta go back and ask, this way we just kinda take care of it that night.
I understand.
Everybody else for Natalie?
Sure, just really quick, because I think the board had a really good discussion with the applicant, raised a lot of really good questions, and, you know, we'll anticipate that that narrative will be submitted, responding to those and also the comments in our memo. But ultimately, I just wanted to, you know, note for the board, our memo discusses the resolutions and the seeker findings, and, you know, what the original approval was intended for, for both of these gatehouses. And ultimately, I think, you know, our biggest concerns were, A, having, you know, ready, available access for ESOs, and how is that going to be effectuated? And then also, as part of the original approval, there was a security plan that was reviewed with the chief of police and approved and memorialized in the resolution. So we thought that at a minimum, that plan should be revised and referred to the ESOs for their comments and consideration. The only other thing that we did wanna note is the full-time occupied booth at Nininger would have had to have had a bathroom, obviously, for whomever was going to be occupying that. So where previously there was a sewer and water connection in that area, approvals over the course of time have eliminated actually the pump station that was adjacent to what was going to be the gatehouse. You know, so if it was, then required to be full-time occupied, the applicant would need to make those considerations and revise the site plan and subdivision essentially to show those services. The only other thing that I had a question for, for James and for the applicant, is there was a hydrant originally proposed in that area. I think it has not been constructed to date. If that affects, is affected by this application at all, then it should be noted for the board to consider. Otherwise, it would be presumed that it will be constructed.
All right, yeah, I'll get that answer for you, too.
Sure, and that's all we had.
Does the board feel we're in a position to have Natalie refer it to ESOs and let them comment?
I think so, yeah.
All right, so I'll offer a motion to have the application referred to ESO for comment?
Do you, may I wait until we get the narrative from the applicant? You think that'll be helpful, maybe, potentially? Because I think all the questions you just said.
Will probably come up there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so when you get the narrative, this way, you could just, when you get it, go, so we don't have to come back.
Okay.
Yeah, did I get a second, you seconded, right? Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
I know, Kelly, you have a few.
I just have one. Well, okay, a few. It was referred to G M L, but just recently, so you still have to wait for that. It does require a public hearing, but seeker, the applicant's attorney, Jay Myrow, called me this afternoon, and I let him know the same thing that I'm telling this board, is that right now I don't feel that the seeker can just be reaffirmed. I went back through the original studies from 2005 for this, and there's actually a lot of emphasis placed on the security plan that Natalie referenced, and these, I don't know what you wanna go, gatehouses, guardhouses, whatever you wanna call them, being a mitigation measure for impacts on police, fire, EMS, and court services as well. So what I told him is that the applicant, that I would be asking the board to ask the applicant, to provide a narrative or a consistency analysis, or if they needed to go further, a brief study to show how the changes that they are proposing are basically adequate mitigation measures in place of what the board previously approved, so that you could complete seeker. So I know that's different from what you normally have, but I think it's important because the board, back when it was still the town of Woodbury Planning Board, had a concern with this, and I just wanna make sure that that's adequately addressed.
Well, actually, I think it's, it'll be good now, because they'll have years of real-world data to see how much service and when we hear from ESOs, if they've actually had any issues or?
Yeah, and there's, if there's other ones that are similar to this in the neighborhood, like Richard's just saying, those are some, that they can check those out, too. Hint, hint, might wanna check those out. So, yeah, they can have some real-world experience on how they operate best for the ESOs and is additional, additional service.
Did Jay say when he was gonna get that?
Did he say what?
When he's gonna get the, the analysis done?
Uh, no, he didn't, but I forwarded him a copy of the two pages that were relevant in the finding statement, and I said, here you go, the board's gonna need some information.
I'm just trying to do the timing of the public hearing, so that we have everything.
Yeah, I know he was, he was interested in getting it in as fast as he could, but I told him that if he tried to get it in by the end of the day, like before tonight's meeting, that it would not be considered by this board. So I don't know how long it's gonna take them, now that there's additional information that James has heard tonight. So it might take, I'd say, at least a week to put it together.
All right, so I'm gonna say probably the 15th, then, meeting? That gives him two, gives him just about two weeks.
Yeah, I think that should be fine.
Okay, so I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for November 15th.
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor? So two weeks before, you have to have the narrative and all that other stuff in?
Totally possible, we'll, we'll get it to you right away.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I was kind to you, Larry, I put every, at least I put all your stuff together. All right, next item on the agenda, Hartman ARB, Two First Avenue. Review and discuss documents submitted for the ARB and Ridge Preservation Application for proposed addition to a story, to an existing dwelling. Said property is located at Two First Avenue, known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, section 214, block 6, lot 5.
Hi, Larry Hartman. Just a quick overview with the Two First Avenue. This application was at this board, I believe, a couple of months ago. The board sent us to the Z B A for variances. This is an existing, just to remind you, this is an existing non-conforming seasonal house, which we're keeping the footprint, with just filling in the, an addition, the inside, as specified in the plans, and the two decks. We have discussed it a couple of times, and then we were sent to the Z B A for, get all those variances, which we did, and now we're coming back to the board, to review, and after we got all the variances from the Z B A.
Yeah, so just for the board's identification, we did get seven variances from the Z B A for this. They got variances for minimum lot area, front yard setback, front yard setback for First Avenue, Scottum Up Road, side yard setback, side yard setback, both sides, rear yard setback, and maximum permitted lot coverage. As of now, this application is all, is not exempt from the moratorium, unless, of course, the applicant can demonstrate there'll be no increase in water usage. Natalie?
Sure, the only other thing I think that's important to kind of just confirm for the board and with the applicant is that right now the property is zoned as a seasonal use or classified as a seasonal use, and I believe the intention is to convert to a year-round dwelling, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that it just includes a little bit more than just your typical ARB and Ridge Preservation Review. So the code does have a section that outlines what would be required for a property to be converted from seasonal to year-round use. Our memo lists all of those requirements, and then also how we think that the applicant complies. So at this time, we think that there should be additional information submitted on the septic system that exists on the site. Number one, the septic system should be shown on the plan. There should be a certified inspection report confirming that the size of the septic tank and the construction is adequate and functioning properly. You know, I think that's important to process this conversion from, again, seasonal to year-round use. With respect to, you've already noted all the variances that were received from the Z B A. We did ask for some confirmation on the height of the proposed home. I think when you originally looked at this application, before it was referred to the Z B A, it was intended to be a two-story structure. Now the applicant is proposing a three-story structure, where that first level is really a basement and almost like partially exposed essentially at grade. But again, just to confirm, the height is appropriate. One of the things that the applicant did provide for you was a rendering, I think, from First Street, the front, from First Street. This is a corner lot, so you may wish to see a rendering of what the property would look like from Scunny Monk as well, to consider the impacts under your ARB review. With respect to the size of the home, we note, our memo notes that the gross floor area of the home is 112% larger than the smallest comparable home and 1.5% smaller than the largest comparable home. So it does kinda fit within that range, although certainly more towards one end. With respect to Ridge Preservation, the applicant has provided materials to demonstrate the visibility from the view corridor. We recommend you consider those and request any additional information as you require, as you would require. With respect to Ridge Preservation, the code requires the use of earth tone and natural colors. We recommend you consider whether the application complies. And then finally, I'm not sure, I know Larry kinda mentioned reusing the existing footprint, but sort of infilling some areas and then deck construction. But if there are going to be any trees that are removed on the site, again, your Ridge Preservation Code requires you to consider limiting the amount of tree removal, but also preservation of trees that are greater than eight-inch diameter at breast height, except for where it's essential to the location of the structure. So I do believe, based on Google Earth imagery, that this is sort of a heavily wooded site, although, you know, when you see the tops of trees and it's covering everything, it's hard to say for sure. But you may wanna consider whether a tree survey would be needed, or if there's an opportunity to preserve any of those trees. And again, that's at the discretion of the board. And otherwise, a public hearing remains to be scheduled for this application.
Questions for Natalie? Kelly?
Nothing.
Yeah, you have nothing on this one, right?
You covered everything I had. You covered everything I had, so I'm good.
All right, I stole your thunder tonight.
Nah, nah, it's all right.
So, yeah, as far as conversion to the seasonal dwelling, the only outstanding issue is the septic system, which the applicant will have to provide. Otherwise, it's on a public road, it's certified out in a park, it's tear-down and rebuild, so it's gonna comply with the current New York State. It's tear down and rebuild, so it's gonna comply with the current New York State Building Codes. And they got all the variances that they needed from the ZBA. This board just has to take a, a look at the renderings of the neighborhood and make a determination if the house fits in with what's there. It is, um, a very mixed neighborhood as far as structures go. There are some still bungalows there, I guess if you want to call them that, and there are some much larger houses, all intermingled over there, so...
Yeah, that's correct. There's basically, all of these lots were once bungalows.
Yeah, it was a bungalow colony at one point, that...
Uh, yeah, this was not a colony, but it was off, everybody had their own lot, which, there is a couple of existing bungalows still in the area. Um, most of these lots already can vary into regular seasonal home. All into single-family. For example, this one was a multifamily, a multifamily seasonal home. Would cover it into a single-family, um, all year round. So, yes, most of it was built similar to what we're, um, proposing. Most of, of the neighborhood's areas. Some of them still has bungalows, like this was, but most of it is already built, I guess.
Most of them are a little bit larger. What's the board think about the house and how it looks? I, compared to the pink house that's there right now, it's definitely an improvement. Looks like someone went to the special aisle at Home Depot and just picked up whatever was on sale. I, going to the neighborhood, that's, I mean, I think for the most part, it fits into what that neighborhood has become. And I, I don't think, um, there's really any improvements that need to be done. I don't know about the trees, I haven't gone there. But if you're saying it's going to be the existing footprint and the deck, the deck is the only thing that's getting added on in the rear, right?
Correct, the deck, um, filling in, which, which basically is basically, which, filling in that little void is not gonna affect any trees. If you look at existing pictures, I don't think there are any trees within the ten feet of the house. I don't know if you have the alt emission, which are the page number five, with that pink house. Looking at the sides, this is just gonna be a, let me see the size of the deck. I believe, a ten-foot deck. Uh, I don't see any trees surrounding that. The house within ten feet of the house. And as far as footprint, as you said, it's the exact same.
My concern would only be the front and the side of the house, just as long as that stuff stays relatively untouched, if you look at the images of it, I mean...
Larry, I mean, I'm just looking at this survey and page three of your plans, and I mean, that clearly shows a new addition on the back of the house versus just the infill on the front of it. I just want to make sure you are proposing that rear addition and two decks on either side.
The two decks and the, the, correct, that is correct.
Okay, so it's not really the same footprint? I just want to make that clear to the board.
I believe there was an old mechanical, that's how the distinct derived. There was some kind, okay. There was a shuck decked over there, okay, so, yeah, it is.
Changing.
How about this, how about, I recommend to the board, go take a drive-by, look at the property before the public hearing. And if there's concerns, bring them to the public hearing, so we can address them with the applicant. How about we do that?
Um, I would like to ask the board if we can pass, I mean, we can do that, but if we can possibly schedule a, a public hearing.
Depends how fast can you get the, the sewer, the, um...
That's a question, the sewer septic is, depending on the, is on the...
Well, I mean, you don't have to have it before the public hearing, but it will prevent the board from taking action if we don't have a report saying the septic is in good working order.
Correct, I mean, septic does take a long time, just too bad with that, this was just brought up. Now, I mean, we discussed this a long time ago, that we're gonna cover this into a full, um, seasonal home. I think, and doing a study on a septic does take time. I understand that it's needed, and we'll do it. And I understand that we cannot vote before we get that. It is a lengthy process, um, just getting anybody that still does septic to come down takes a while. So now that, I start out, now that we have to do it, it's, again, I'll wait, but for the public hearing, I don't see why that is, um...
No, we can do the public hearing, I'm just letting you know, even if I schedule you for November, just don't expect, this board just, I'm setting, I'm trying to set expectations here.
Yeah.
This board can't take action until we know you comply with the village code for conversion of seasonal dwelling. So, yes, we can absolutely schedule a public hearing, I think we're in an okay place for that. But I'm just saying, don't...
I understand.
Just trying to set the expectation level there. November fifteenth, is everybody okay with that?
Okay.
Alright, so I'll offer motion to schedule a public hearing for November fifteenth for this application.
Second.
Second. Any fa, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, uh, that all, that, that I need to do is the septic study. And, um, again, regarding the trees, um, the board is gonna physically take a look at that.
We're gonna take, the board, this board will take a write-down.
And, other than that, are there any, again, as I saw the comments, but there is a dimension showing that it conforms with the thirty-five feet regarding the height, on the elevations, and what else?
The only thing was the water moratorium. So right now, uh, you're not exempt unless you can demonstrate there's no increase in water. Um, the Board of Trustees is considering a new water moratorium, but that is not in effect yet. So, I don't know if that will be in effect when you do come back.
Um, I do see the existing hat, existing dwelling hat, two, two-bedroom units, correct? So that's a total of four bedrooms. Um, I'll have to take a look again, I'll have to make sure it conforms, um...
Okay, then maybe something you want to put in a narrative whenever you're responding to Natalie's comments? Just say, just in case the new moratorium isn't in effect yet?
Again, I have to make sure that has only, it, as of now, shows only four bedrooms, so... I guess, I believe it goes by the total of bedrooms.
Just to kind of get back to your question, so I think, yeah, it's, the big thing is the septic system. I think the board is gonna review the trees, so there's no tree survey that would necessarily be needed.
I think it'd just be easier for us to go out and take a look than, than doing that.
It also seems like the board would not really require that additional rendering from the Scunny Monk side, you know, so you don't have to do anything with that, we'll know, we'll just remove that from our next memo. And then the only thing as far as the height goes, Larry, is I think when we were looking at it, the information in the bulk table varied from the elevation, and then the scale of that plan was not correct. So, just if you can button that up, just to make sure that it complies, that would be great.
Okay.
And with the septic system, we, just because it, does someone, uh, just hired a septic pumping company? Another applicant just hired a septic pumping company, come out and said it with the septic system's okay? That's not an exception, you actually have to have an engineer say the septic system is okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be looking for, like, what's the septic tank constructed of? You know, what's the general condition of it? You know, for instance, if it was like metal and rusted, then, you know, the board's gonna require you to replace it, type of thing, you know? Things like that, so. And also the size, you know, how big is it? Is it suitable for a four-hand, for a bedroom?
And Kelly, just a point of edification, because we're not sure what the village board's gonna do with the change to the water moratorium. Are we gonna, is, are you gonna look at it, or is the board gonna look at whatever, um, the county had on record for amount of bedrooms? How are we gonna make a determination?
Uh, normally, I would talk to, to Natalie in the building department and find out what it was approved for and what it was designed for, and then what is being proposed now.
Okay.
And if it, if it is, if there is a discrepancy, then maybe they could fall under a different exemption. If not, then they'd have to go approach the board.
Okay. Alright, any other questions on this one, Larry?
No.
Moving right along then. Hartman, ARB, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, West End. Review and discuss ARB for proposed single-family dwellings on adjacent vacant properties. Said property is located at twenty-seven and twenty-nine, West End Drive, in Highland Mills, and is known in the Village of Woodright Tax Maps, Section two-three-five, Lot one, Lots five and eight. Welcome back.
Made it all the way back. Larry Hartman, from Hartman Design. This is a new project in front of the board, this was never, um, proposed yet. This is a, two, um, two lots, existing lots. Zoned as single-family, we're planning to build, um, two single families. This is an existing non-coforming lot, but we are not proposing anything worse than, um... We're not proposing anything, uh, one second, pre-existing non-coforming. We're not going outside of what is existing, which means with an existing setback, with an existing, uh, side yard is, uh, one second. Yeah, so the only thing non-coforming basically is the, is the lot area, which, obviously, we cannot change. This is an existing, this has existed, the lot, the lot area. Other than that, with the setbacks, we are complying with all of the, all of the zoning. So I did provide a booklet, uh, first of all, showing the site, um, site plan, as well as architectural plans. We did provide floor plans, elevations, and renderings for both lots. They are gonna be similar, but yet the same, um, but different in the front, uh, facades. So, um, so we did provide all of that information. Additionally, we did provide, um, the view corridor, showing where this is located compared to the, those two lots compared to, uh, relatively to the view corridor, as well as pictures, um, um, aiming towards the view corridors. That's basically, it's basically relatively, um, si- simple project, kind of, um, single-family for a single-family, uh, zoning.
On A101, it's the basement plan. The, at the staircase, mechanical, I guess, the walk-in closet in the garage. Is that unexcavated, is that excavated and just unfinished?
That's unfinished, the rest of it?
Yeah, on the left, there's no label.
Yes, unfinished, we'll leave it there.
So fully excavated but unfinished?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, the, the lot, they all sloped down. So basically, this is gonna be, in the back, it's gonna be technically walkout.
A walkout, okay.
As you can see, the garage enters, a car can enter over there.
Or a drive-through, depending on how bad of a driver you are. Questions from the board for the applicant? Natalie?
Sure, um, so just to kind of reiterate, this application is for two single-family homes on two separate vacant lots located off of West End Drive cul-de-sac. As Larry mentioned, the lot is undersized as far as the lot area and the lot width is concerned. Uh, so typically, you would either discuss that with Kelly or refer it to Mike for an opinion whether or not that's legally pre-existing condition, a legally pre-existing condition permitted to remain. Uh, we did have a comment on coverage, as the board and Larry knows, the coverage should include all impervious surfaces, including proposed driveways, decks, and things like that. So we just want the applicant to confirm that the coverage calculation shown on the plot plans consider all of those features. And if they are proposed, um, they should be shown on the plot plans that were provided. Uh, we've asked for confirmation that the twenty-seven, West End Drive home meets the height restrictions of the zone. Yes, so that should be confirmed on the plans that were submitted, as well as the setback dimensions to each of the homes should be shown on the plan, although generally, they do seem to fit within the, uh, building envelope, if you will, when you're looking at those setback lines. With respect to water and sewer, uh, this is an application for new construction, so the form should be filled out, including the materials and the size of the services that are proposed. The plans that were submitted show septic system development for each of these lots, but actually, they are located within the consolidated sewer area and by code are required to connect to the village's sewer system. So the plan should be revised to show those connections, both to the sewer and the water system. The other issue that came up during our review of this application is that there may be a sewer main that runs through either one or both of these properties. Uh, we did talk to Mickey about that. He found the sewer manhole essentially in the cul-de-sac, and it shows that it generally follows through the properties, but you have to show on your plan where it is.
Is there, is that public sewer?
It's a public sewer, yeah.
Is there a sewer easement?
Oh, to be determined, so we've put that back on the applicant essentially to do a record search and provide those easements or any filed documents to Kelly to confirm. I know the plans right now show a drainage easement, um, but I don't know if a sewer easement exists. But regardless, it's public infrastructure that needs to be protected or considered as part of the development of these lots. So that needs to be shown on the plans. Let's see, with respect to the ARB portion of this application, there were renderings and elevations submitted, but we've asked for rear and left renderings for twenty-seven, West End, which appear to be missing from the plan package. Comparison, photos of a comparable home should be provided for the board to consider the similarity and dissimilarity criteria of the code. The board should also be considering whether or not these two homes are too similar or dissimilar to each other as well, um, you know, which is typical when you have multiple developments happening at the same time. Uh, the building footprint and gross floor area of proposed structures compared to neighboring homes should be provided for the board to consider. The ARB form should list the deck and retaining wall materials. Let's see, again, this came up with the very last application, but since these lots are undeveloped, there is a substantial amount of clearing that will be required for construction of these homes. Right now, the limits of disturbance essentially follow the sep, or the lot lines of the property, so they will be mostly cleared, um, you know, unless the board would like the applicant to make any attempts to preserve any trees. Um, you know, maybe you would want to see a tree survey in this instance for trees that are greater than eight-inch DBH. Uh, you know, that's something that the board should consider with input from the applicant. Again, that's under your Ridge Preservation Criteria. The code also requires under Ridge Preservation that the homes be earth tone or neutral in color. Uh, the renderings kind of show essentially white homes, but the ARB form lists linen and sterling. Uh, so you may want to consider with the applicant, maybe material samples for each of those, uh, just so you can confirm that it does comply with the code requirements. And, we already talked about the easements, and... Oh, the only other thing is there were certain application materials, I think, provided for like one and not the other property, so I think we tried to list that. It was like the very last comment in our memo, so if you can make sure that those are submitted for a complete application, that would be good. That's all I have.
Thank you, Natalie. So I think what set, in my mind, what sets this application apart than most of the other ARB Ridge Pres applications this board has seen, is that these are two native lots, they have not been disturbed. This board also acts as the Environmental Conservation Commission for the village. And one of the provisions, and keep me honest here, is that, uh, when native, natively clearing land, we are supposed to look at tree caliber to make sure that trees over six...
Didn't write down the caliber, hold on, keep going.
So anyway, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to, um, basically, what I'm trying to say is, Larry, is you're gonna have to go out and you're gonna have to, um, either stake, probably stake, the footprint of the home. We did this over in Apple...
Summit Avenue, right?
Summit, and we did it over in Apple Hill, too, I think.
So it was over in Apple Hill, yeah.
You're gonna go out and have to have your engineer stake the outline of the home, so the board can get an idea of what's going to be cleared. Um, we may ask you to reposition the home on the lot. Um, there may be a thirty-foot oak tree in the middle of the home, or something like that, that this board may want to see preserved, and there may be more scrub trees to the left, to the right, further, further forward or further back. Okay. Yeah, this, this, Larry, this, unfortunately, this application's a little bit different. Um, we don't know, the norm, we, in Woodbury, we don't normally have a lot of native lots that we have new homes going on, so the review's a little bit different here, I mean...
So basically, you would want, on the existing vacant lot, somebody to stake out the, whatever footprint of the house, so you can kind of get a, an idea where the house is gonna be.
Where the house is gonna be, and how much of the lot is gonna be cleared, and what trees are going to be, or I guess... Or I guess the other option would be you could do a full tree survey, right?
He could, but I think he'd prefer just to mark out where the house is.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We could, we, you could, we could ask you to go out and do a full tree survey and come back with the plan that shows every tree over a specific diameter, or you can stake the lots that will show the corners and the driveway, typically, we do the driveway, right?
Yeah, you wanna see probably the limits of clearing.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And then the corners of the home, certainly, just...
So there'll be two sets of stakes. There'll be the corners of the home and the driveway, and then the limit, the limits of disturbance that you're prepared, or you're asking for. And then this board will take a look, and then we'll come back to you after the board goes out and reviews it and says, after looking at the lot, we're okay with it, or we're looking at the lot, maybe, is there a way we can shift the house five feet to the left, five feet to the right, forward, back?
The other thing we should review is if there are any endangered species that would be disturbing.
That would come up in the...
In secret, but it's a type 2, and usually in this area, the, I mean, we would, we could put a clearing limitation for Indiana bat and northern long-eared bat, but usually the only plant is the small world pagonia. Do you know of any others in this area? I don't think...
That's just the bat that's usually the endangered species that comes up.
Yeah, I was just saying, like, for plant life, but I don't think that's actually in Woodbury, but that's in this area. So I'm just gonna do a quick search.
Was it when Levinson, Almeyne, Orange County, was looking to build up off of carpenter?
That what, they're endangered plants now, or species?
No, no, that was, that was the bat.
Okay, yeah.
And it was not so much that they were going to disturb the bat, but disturb them seasonally.
Well, we would do, we would put a condition in that it could only be, like, only be removed during non-bat season.
Right.
I know there's a term, I don't know what it's, it's totally skipping my head right now.
Yeah. I, I'll put the clearing restriction down.
So, Larry, what we typically do when we ask you, an applicant, to do this, is that whenever you can arrange, you have your engineers go out, just have them call Natalie, the building department, sorry, and the building department will let this board know that the stakeout's been done, and then we'll go up, I'll instruct the board to go take a ride up there and take a look, to come back. I don't think you're, I don't think you're at a public hearing yet, I think you got some engineering issues, easement issues to work out.
Correct. One of your, other than that, regarding the ridge preservation, again, a lot of, a lot of comments came across, because of the ridge preservation. If there's any questions regarding that, if we need to submit anything additionally in order to see if you can see the slots from the view corridor, things like that.
Being the board's taking a field trip, would we just, would the board just like to do it on the, take a look at their, themselves, instead of having the applicant submit anything else? Okay.
So I guess...
So the board will do part, as part of the field trip, the board will look to see about ridge preservation?
Yeah, I wanna do as much as possible in the beginning, not...
Oh, understand, so, but we'll, we'll...
Not find out later, and, you know, then things take a lot of time.
Oh, you, you heard me, what the board has been instructed to also look for ridge preservation collines when we're out on the field.
Yeah, okay, and also, again, if we can, the collars is gonna cover, if we get exempt from the ridge preservation, that is gonna solve, that is may solve the issue with the collars as well, correct?
Can you drop samples of the collars off here, so I can have the board come and look at them?
Okay, we'll do that. Again, so I'll do that right away, so we can get, take care of that.
May I?
As well as the design.
What is that?
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to kind of go back to that point about, you know, if the board makes a finding that the homes won't be visible from the view corridor, it doesn't automatically exempt you from all of the requirements of that section, the planning board may waive all or part of those sections, so, just so you know.
What, of the ridge preservation restrictions?
Yes, yeah, so like, for instance, it could be not visible, but the board could still say you can't have a white home, type of thing, so, and Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's the way the code reads, and I just thought it would be worth bringing up, so that the board and you are aware.
You know, it says that you can waiver or adjust all or part of the ridge preservation requirement, so you can take a look at that, but it might help, yeah, to go out, look at the site, and if the applicant can drop off the samples, take a look at those as well.
Yeah, typically, if you drop off the samples, they put them in their closet.
Yeah.
And we know, and we just go look at it.
Yeah, Maria will send an email out when they, when they, he drops them off, and then it gives the board a chance to look at the, is there surrounding cul-de-sac in the 300-foot radius, and then they can know about if it's gonna fit into the neighborhood or not. I, the neighborhood's not ringing in my head, so I don't know what the whole area looks like for some reason. I didn't even know we had a West End Drive until the application came in.
Me either.
So...
I am checking for any other species, just 'cause Mike brought that up, but it's taking a long time to generate the report, so just give me that.
Okay.
Okay, and regarding the ARB, I'm just gonna make sure there's any questions or comments, like the house design, or any of that.
Could you make it a log cabin?
Hmm, I don't think it's quite gonna fit in.
I, I think, Larry, again, it's going to be, the board will have to weight their determination on that until they go and they look at the neighborhood. I'm not familiar with the neighborhood, to be 100% honest with you, so I don't know off the top of my head what it looks like up there. But it's going to be, but when the board comes back from their field trip, and we get your, 'cause you have to work out with your engineer, the sewer issue, right? 'Cause right now, you're showing septic, this, we heard it's in the centralized sewer district, and there's a potential easement on the property. So you may have to shift the house anyway, 'cause there may be an easement that runs right through your living room.
Whoever did the easement made it right in the middle, that's, I don't know, but as of now, I believe he looked at the records, there was no easement. I'll have to see, I guess if there's some kind of a pipe over there, it's a vacant lot. I mean, it does look like it was ever dug up, because it has all those trees, if you're looking at the picture.
No, I know, if you look at Google Earth, it looks like, but it's hard to tell if there's scrub trees or not, like, there's a nice canopy on it, but...
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure when this subdivision was approved either, so I mean, this has gone back a long time, I think, where the trees probably just grew back at this point.
Yeah. So it would be just the deed search they have to do, right, Kelly?
Do the deed search, but you might wanna call Mickey of the water department?
I think Natalie was, was already started a conversation with them?
Yeah, I think right now, the deed search, but also the sewer main that exists should be shown on your plan, so that the board can consider where it is on the lot.
I'll have to talk with this, if he doesn't find the records, where, where were you able to find that?
I think Mickey said that there is a sewer manhole in the cul-de-sac, so you'll be able to...
How do I get to the...
Pop the cover and start walking.
No, how does it know? There's available infrastructure mapping, so essentially, instead of the, everything flowing by gravity up through the drive, or the West End Drive, it flows down through this property and then connects to the road south.
Yeah, that I see, because I see there's a drainage easement, so...
Right.
I'm sure all the water goes through, but that's the drainage easement all the way at the corner of the lot.
You know, those engineers, they do crazy things, though.
That sewer main...
They can do it, I need to document it, because if you have a, you have a pipe in the middle, you know, that is not documented, you know?
The short version is, we gotta make sure it's not there. We don't want you to put a backhoe in and...
Yeah.
It serves all of West End Drive, essentially, so it's not just a small...
We'll take a look at it, definitely.
Piece, yeah.
So the only species there is the northern long-eared bat, and to say what Natalie was saying, this was part of Hickory Hills, Section D, which was approved between 1965 and 1967.
Hickory Hills, I've never heard of that one.
No, me neither. I was really surprised.
So it's quite possible that the main was put in after the subdivision was approved, then?
Most likely, it was put in as part of the subdivision, 'cause I think it, like I said, it only serves all of the homes on West End, and then connects downstream on whatever road runs parallel with West.
Does Mickey have a map, or?
Yeah, we have mapping. That's how we knew there was a question, you know, but the problem is, is that the mapping doesn't show the lot line, so it's not sure, we're not sure exactly where it is in relation to where you wanna propose the homes and also in the lot line, to the lot lines.
Got anybody thin in your office?
What is that?
Got anybody a little thinner in your office that can...
We'll, we'll do, we'll use scales, we'll do everything we can to figure out, if we know where the pipe is, it shouldn't be that hard to kind of overlap the lot lines. If we're, if there's, if it's concrete information, then we should be able to do it. There is a round cul-de-sac, so you can easily realize, you know, it's not like the middle of the street, which it's hard to overlap things and get it right.
Understood. So I think with this one, Larry, I think you're at least one, you're probably one submission away from a public hearing, so, you know, with this...
I'll try, I'll try to get that as soon as possible, the staking of the driveway and the house. I guess once, once the board visits the site, I guess we'll try to get, to take a look at the ridge reservation as well, and then we'll, I guess we'll discuss the ARB and everything.
Yeah, so work on the, the other points of Natalie's comments while...
Yeah, that, that I could work meanwhile.
Yeah, so let's do it in tandem. You get that stuff done, and then we'll, this board will take its homework as well. With the weather we're having, we'll probably have a blizzard today, you put the stakes in.
Knock on wood. Knock on wood.
Only rains in the weekend, by the way, so it'll be pretty good.
Yeah, only on Saturday.
Yeah, that's so true.
It's the seventh in a row.
Yeah, same, I feel you, yeah.
All right, I think we beat this one to death, right? Okay. You good with what you gotta do, Larry, on this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, look, Hartman, 88 Jefferson. Review and discuss revised documents submitted for ARB and ridge preservation of proposed two-story addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said property is located at 88 Jefferson Street in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 240, Block 1, Lot 3, sorry, Block 1, Lot 9.
To recap this application, basically, this is an existing, an existing house, we're doing an addition, a one-story addition in the back, I believe it is a one-story, let's make sure, no, a, in the basement and a sunroom above.
Yep.
We have been in front of the board a couple of times, the main issue arose that this subdivision was, the original, the problem was, this was a subdivision, which the zoning was changed afterwards, which means the lot became an unperforming lot. In the past, there was an issue with the setbacks. I did find the existing, the original subdivision, and realized it was part of a cluster development, which land was dedicated for the green environment. At that point, and they got approved based on a 15-foot setback, we did submit a letter showing that for the board, not for the board, for the building department and for Kelly, and we determined that we could use the old setbacks, so we went ahead. Now, we can receive that, the old, the old, the old, the existing, the old subdivision, the original one, did not have any limitations on lot coverage. After the zoning was changed, there is a lot coverage of 20%. The existing house, as of now, is about 84, so is probably most of the lots in this area. Again, I submitted the same letter, that this was approved as part of a cluster development, and we would like to use that existing base levels agreed then on the cluster development, and there was no limit on lot coverage. The rest of the things, I believe we have discussed, but if the board have any questions regarding the ARB, I believe the ridge preservation, we did determine that this is not visible from any view corridor, and if the board has any...
Yeah, we've, we've discussed ARB, public hearing, ridge pres here. I think Natalie, your memo covers the really last two remaining issues, right?
Yeah, I think, well, actually, just kind of to go back to the ARB and ridge preservation stuff again, 'cause I don't know that I did mark that you guys had considered the visibility or not yet, but again, if it's, if you're, the materials that were submitted are adequate for you to make that finding, you know, again, you can waive or adjust any requirements of that code section.
I thought we did, 'cause I know we waived the public hearing in August, I thought we would've.
Okay, I'll just make it and I'll amend it for our next memo. As far as the ARB, I know that the board definitely did decide that the materials and colors proposed were going to be acceptable. I think there were still some questions on the size of the home. We had comments on the gross floor area calculation, and I think our memo noted certain revisions, Larry, that should be provided on the plan, just to kind of confirm. But essentially, right now, the available information that you have on comparable properties in this home confirms that the building footprint is approximately 20% larger than, again, the comparable homes, but you don't have that same quality of calculations for the gross floor area, so we haven't attempted to put a percentage on that for the board to consider. Nonetheless, yes, you're right, there is this big threshold issue, I think, of the coverage. The building inspector has appined that the 20% applies to this application. I know Kelly's gonna weigh in on it, so I'll just leave it at that. The other two things I just wanted to mention are, at the last meeting or the applicant's last appearance, there was some discussion on whether or not this would be impacted by the moratorium. I think at this point, the MICA is considered an accessory used to the residential structure, and then therefore would be treated like a pool, so it's not subject to the moratorium, although Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong. And then the other thing was, the board at length discussed this public versus private MICA issue. At applicant's last appearance, they described the use of each room, and they haven't provided a written narrative necessarily for the board, but I think that we kind of came to, it came to a head, if you will, and you can include any reasonable conditions of your action to ensure that this remains private. So those are the only things I have.
Thank you. Questions for Natalie? Kelly?
So a couple of things. The first thing, I just went back to my notes from the August meeting, and I do have that the board, board believes the addition matches the house and the neighborhood, so I don't know that you took any other official actions other than waiving the public hearing, but you did make that finding. The next thing I wanted to touch on was the moratorium, and I just wanna make sure it's clear that, you know, not every MICA is going to be exempt from the moratorium. This one is unique in all of the questions and everything that, that you asked and that Larry was able to answer for you last time, this truly is a private MICA.
Yeah, I mean, for the publics, that was a very extensive conversation, I think, this board had over the size and use.
Well, it's important to understand and how it functions, and, you know, where the pipes were going, and, you know, things like, and access to it is very important, so, and what I've done is, I've taken that information and I've determined that this would be exempt from the moratorium in the state that it is. I also reviewed the documents that the applicant provided specifically concerning lot coverage, and I, and I went down a bit of a rabbit hole, took a deep dive, whatever you wanna say, and was with the building department and the clerk pulling out every possible old zoning code, subdivision regulations, et cetera, for the time period. So the, the short version is, yes, Mike has determined that 20% lot coverage is applicable here. However, the code at the time that this was actually approved also required 20% lot coverage, and the discussions by the board that were held at that time was really discussing the importance of preserving the trees. There was no intention that there be zero lot coverage. Essentially, that would allow every single lot to be paved, which wasn't what the intention of the board was. From reading, obviously, I wasn't there, and I'm not in their minds, but from reading the minutes, they were emphasizing preservation, so I think it's important and to go back for that historically, but the building inspector here has made the determination that 20% is applicable. And so the applicant, if they wanna, right now, they're over that, but if they want to go over what is already existing, that would require a variance. Sorry, I probably could've done that shorter, but I really wanted everybody to go down that rabbit hole with me.
So the, the really, really short version is, if they wanna continue forward the plans they have in front of us now, I mean, they have to challenge the building departments, the building inspectors' determination on lot coverage, or go to the ZBA for variance. So either way, you go to the ZBA, it depends if you wanna go to the game.
If I have to, I'll go, but the question is, what is the process of challenging it? Because technically, it was determined that if this subdivision was approved and land was given away for preservation based on a particular bulk table zoning data...